October 15th, Common Council Meeting to Order. Mr. Taylor, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Williams, would you do the wrong call, please?
Mr. Boyce?
President?
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Ms. Wiles?
Here.
Mr. Air?
President.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes to September 24th, 2019, Budget Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Approval of minutes to September 24th, 2019 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Nine zero, motion carries. Petitioners comments by citizens who are present. I have one from Dr. Brad, and I'm gonna get this name, Dahlgren?
The Lager, that's fine.
Dahlgren? I'm sorry. Would you like to wait until the items on the agenda comes up, or would you like to speak now?
That'd be fine, I'll wait until the items.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, members of council. Been a little busy last couple of weeks. On the 25th of September, there was a chamber luncheon. It's a tribute to myself as mayor and my longstanding service. That's all I'll say about that. No, it was a very nice thing to do, and I certainly was humbled and appreciated it. And thanks to the chamber and the committees, et cetera, that put that together, and I was flattered. So, thank you very much. On the 28th, we dedicated the Chargers of Freedom at the Commons. If you haven't seen that, I think most of council has certainly, but it is just beautiful and just a real tribute to our country, and the purpose is to educate mostly young people, but maybe all of us, on the Constitution, Bill of Rights, et cetera. So, just a great addition to the Commons. Did cut a ribbon at Medei Weilos. Did a video for Beaver Materials, kind of celebrating their history and contributions to the city. Did judge for city soup cook-off, and along with John Elmer and Mr. Martin, and did a ribbon cutting last evening at Bombshell Hair Company. Tonight, at 5:30, we honored a young lady, a second grader at Stony Creek, Mia Mahoney. Mia got up early, was playing upstairs on South Ninth, and heard the alarm go off, the smoke alarm go off, and rather than ignore it, which many second graders and some of us could do, she woke up her parents, saved their lives, they got out. We put that fire out pretty quickly, but it went pretty quickly, so we made sure that she was recognized for that, and happy to educate anyone on fire safety. I'm also a judge, and I don't know how I got this, for the chili cook-off at Lowe's, maybe it's your employee, I don't know, I guess I'm good at it. But I do like soup and chili. Next by is one of our fine companies that we have here, and they're having a 10th anniversary open house on the 24th, speaking to second graders at Stony Creek, that's always fun. And then we have the State of the Schools Chamber Lunch, the 30th of this month. So, I know there's other activities I probably missed, but that's all I have on my notes. Are there any questions, or me? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sounds like you've been a busy man.
Well fed.
Yeah, well fed. Council Committee reports. Mr. Taylor?
Tree bark met on October 7th, and items for new business, the fall tree planting will be starting here soon with approximately 93 trees. Not sure exactly where those are gonna go. We've got several we need to replace, so. Did talk to Vince Baker from the Street Department, he's talked to some of the contractors for the planting of our street trees. Most of them are giving us 12 to 15 months, and then some developers are giving us a year. I still think that's an issue moving forward. We need to figure out what we're gonna do with our street trees, or how we wanna approach it. Tree pruning subdivisions will start after leaf season, and stumps for this year are complete, and then if everything goes well, we'll be looking to do some right-of-way pruning also this year.
Ms. Wiles?
Mr. President, I have a Finance Committee report that was held on Thursday, October 10th, and my report is very brief because the majority of tonight's agenda is covered with the topics covered at that meeting. So, I will defer to Mr. Spalding when he comes up later on this evening, but the claims do come to you with a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Ms. Wiles? Approval of claims.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Previously discussed ordinances, council consider ordinance 39-09-19, an ordinance amending parking procedures, Chief Jowett.
Good evening. Four weeks ago, we introduced a proposed parking ordinance that's a pilot project to get us through the next year until the Levinson Project comes online, and we can again, or you can again, look at parking issues. The ordinance is up, I know, for further discussion and a vote tonight, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions of Mr. Jowett? Chief Jowett, I'm sorry. Mr. Taylor?
Chief, I know this is a pilot program. I guess my only question is, this can be addressed at any time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
One of the advantages we're gonna have when this program starts in January is the LPR system that's gonna be doing the enforcement will collect a tremendous amount of data. It's going to tell us, or enable us would be a better word, to determine if our mix is right, if our timing is right. It's just gonna reveal a whole lot of things about the parking situation in Noblesville. I think this is gonna be the best opportunity that we have ever had, and parking issues go by, I read some articles in a public meeting we had a couple of weeks ago that go back to 1926, talking about parking issues in Noblesville. So, I think this is gonna be the best opportunity we will ever have to do evidence-based decision-making once we start getting data from the LPR system. But the proposed ordinance that you have before you tonight is a result of probably four years of discussion with business owners, other stakeholders, city officials, and it is certainly an attempt by a fairly large group of people to craft a parking system that's fairly easily understood, particularly by out-of-towners, and provides opportunities to address some of the issues that 30 years of amending our 1989 ordinance have created.
Any other questions? Mr. Jowett, Chief Jowett?
More of a comment, really, than a question. I appreciate all the work and the information you've given us when we contacted you to give us some background on some things and that. And first of all, I hope that the problems we had back in 1926 aren't the exact same problems we're having today. But there's still some things in this particular ordinance that I think need work, but I think it's probably, as the chief said, our best situation going forward, to be able to make the changes that need to be made once we get a little more information and clarity on some of this stuff.
I have my...
I have a statement, too.
Chief Jowett, I have three areas of concern on our parking hashtag, outside of our parking hashtag, and I think we can monitor these. This is a pilot program, we can change it at any point from January to next December.
Sure.
Does our current parking enforcement officer in his vehicle have the ability to monitor parking along Maple and on Ninth in front of Police Station and down 10th from Logan to Clinton? Will he have that ability to check those plates, to see if there's turnover, to see if they're there for a week, a day, two hours, just to see what that turnover is? I know the little hashtag, he's not gonna be just running around, just going in circles, and so he will have the time to do a check on those areas, to see how they are, and then we can get a report after 30 days as to how it's going, and after 60 days?
He will. He will actually have much more time to check many more areas with a lot more frequency than he did with the old chalk and scooty situation. So, yes, he will absolutely have the time. Any areas that we wanna look at in particular, we can geofence in the system so that the system will take particular looks at a particular segment of parking if we need specific data about it. But he's gonna be making a lot more rounds, and it won't just be of the hashtag area, it'll be of the entire downtown.
My concern is that we have residents downtown, business owners, and if they're gonna just walk a block from their business and park, it's gonna affect other business owners.
Sure.
And we need to know if that's happening, and then we can adjust to it if we need to.
Right.
And by the way, I think I was on the Parking Task Force 16 years ago, so the discussion's been going on for way more than four years, but it's gotten, you know, it's come to a fair conclusion at this point, and we'll see how it goes. So, I appreciate all your effort and all Mr. Boyce and Chamber and Main Streets' effort in this.
Thank you.
Other questions? Statements? We have a request to speak from Dr. Brad, I'm gonna get it wrong, sir.
Dr. Brad?
Dr. Brad. If you would give us your full name, address, and we do allow three minutes to speak. If you go just a shade past that, we do, try to stick to three minutes.
I'm gonna try to stick to three. My name's Dr. Brad Dahlgren. I own Noblesville Family Chiropractic, which is located at 953 Maple Avenue between Ninth and 10th Streets. I'm here tonight to advocate for my patients, to defend their access to health care at my clinic, and to ask you to protect their ability to continue to park along Maple Avenue between Ninth and 10th Streets. The current proposal will turn Maple into a long-term parking lot. It will do to Maple what unrestricted free parking has done to Cherry between Ninth and 10th. Except for one 20-minute parking space, this proposal will kill turnover in that little segment of downtown. Without turnover, there will be insufficient parking for physically compromised patients who are incapable of walking more than a short distance, and as a result, those patients won't receive the treatment that they need. In short, this, without turnover, people will suffer. To avert that, I'm imploring the City Council to be compassionate and make a very small amendment to the current parking proposal, and keep nine spaces open along Maple between Ninth and 10th Streets as two-hour parking. When I approached city leadership about amending this plan, I met with some resistance. That puzzled me. Why was it so hard to see that this plan creates a hardship for patients with medical conditions that hinder their mobility? Then it struck me, leadership was staring at this. This was the focus. What no one saw were the faces of the patients that this proposal would hurt. Tonight, some of those patients who this proposal would hurt are here. I'd like to ask those patients to please stand for a moment. I want you to see them. I want you to look at them. These faces represent hundreds of my patients. These faces represent patients who come to be struggling with herniated discs, crippling sciatica, incapacitating low back pain, degenerative disc disease, advanced arthritis, and conditions like multiple sclerosis and Parkinson's. My patients use canes and crutches, they're elderly, many of them are incapable of walking more than a short distance. With treatment, most of these patients will eventually recover their mobility, but until they're well enough to walk more than a short distance, these patients need to be able to walk, park rather, nearby my clinic. I think this proposal suffers in part from some tunnel vision. This proposal never considered these patients. Incredibly, this proposal never inquired about the needs of these patients. This proposal just doesn't see these patients. Again, it sees this, it sees a hashtag. For that reason, I think this proposal, this one small segment, is cruel. It expects an 85-year-old woman with bone spurs on her spine to walk a block or two in the ice and snow for her treatment. I don't see that as being caring or reasonable. I think that's stony and unfair. I spoke with most of you. I'm convinced that you genuinely care about people. I'm persuaded that you are sympathetic to the needs of patients with physical impairments. I believe that you have compassion for the elderly and kindness in your hearts for physically compromised members of our community. Tonight, I'm begging you to demonstrate your compassion. Show us that you care by amending this proposal. One tiny amendment, keep Maple between Ninth and 10th, two-hour parking. These people are counting on you. Please don't leave them out in the cold. Thank you. If you have questions, I'd be happy, if there's any issues that are unclear, I'd be happy to try to address those.
Thank you. Any questions of Dr. Brad?
I don't have any questions, I have a couple of comments. I did talk to Dr. Brad for quite a while. I guess my concerns are, is I see where he's coming from on one point, but he's got three parking spots on the side of this building, which some people don't have, and his steps aren't ADA compliant. So, we've got two things here that I think needs to be for council to look at. I mean, I understand what he's saying, but they still have to walk up the steps, so I just feel like that with a pilot program, I think we're doing the right thing, and we can change it whenever we see necessary. If the traffic's too heavy and nobody moves, then we can address it, but that's my two comments.
Can I respond to that comment?
Yes.
Just for, just in terms of helping anyone up the stairs, we've never had an issue with that. If it's necessary, either I or my wife have gone down to help someone, I've even carried a patient up the steps to get them in, so we've never had an issue with that.
Realize that, but still, you're up here in front of us, wanting us to make an exception, but yet you're not ADA compliant, so I see two sides of the story.
There are lots of businesses in historic downtown Noblesville that are not ADA compliant.
It's just my comment.
Okay.
Mr. President, I appreciate you allowing me to take a minute. Dr. Brad and I had a chance to speak late last week, and I appreciate you taking time to call. Most of us, I appreciate your patience for being here tonight as well. I suffer from degenerative disc disease. I'm someone who goes to the chiropractor every two weeks. I don't tend to go to you, but I do go to a chiropractor every two weeks. So, after you and I spoke, I have a special place in my heart for your comments, and certainly for your patients, as I could easily be one of your patients. And so I took some time to make sure, I drove by your office several times throughout the day, the last couple of days, and oftentimes found open spots in front of your office, as I know you recognize that there are, and as Mr. Taylor mentioned, there are reserved spots on the side. So, I just wanna reinforce the fact that this is something that we are gonna work very closely with Noblesville Police and our city administration to make sure that we monitor this. This is something that if there is a parking lot, as you say, on Maple, that's something that we will be ready to address from the council side, from the administrative side going forward. This is something that we have, you know, looked at for the better part of my life is parking in downtown Noblesville. And we had to start somewhere, and that's why we felt comfortable with the pilot program, that's why I'm looking, that's why I feel supportive of this, but do appreciate your comments to us tonight. So, I just wanted to go on the record as stating that. I also did have a question. I believe, as the city, have we added some handicap spaces along Ninth and Maple, I believe?
One handicap and one 20-minute, I believe, group. I don't know if the 20-minute's been added yet or not.
The 20-minute spot is part of the current proposal, which is nice, but that's not necessarily any guarantee that a patient would be able to use it, and the ADA space is nice, it's at the end of the block, it's probably, Bob and I were talking about this before the meeting, we think it might be 80, 85 feet. I didn't measure it, I was, when I saw it there last night, but that is probably a distance that's too far for many patients to actually walk from the very end of the corner. I appreciate getting the ADA space in that area. And if I could just respond to one other issue, I love what you said, you said, and you're making my point, I don't know if you know this, but you're making my exact point. You drove by many times, and other council people have said the same thing, so did Bob DeBois this evening. He's driven by, and he sees there's spots on the street. That's because right now, two-hour parking is enforced, or it's still there, it's not being enforced, but nobody knows it. It's not open, it's not like, it's public awareness, so people are respecting the two-hour parking right now, whereas they weren't for May, June, and July. Once word got out that it was not being enforced, those spots filled up, and there were, there are emails that I sent to Shane... there were, there are emails that I sent to, uh, to Shane Ganin and to Officer Brooks, uh, about cars parked in violation of fifty-two hours, fifty-two hours and a two-hour spot.
I appreciate that comment. My, the point of my comments is that we are going to continue to work with business owners like yourself to monitor this pilot program, um, once it goes into effect in January.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll, I'll make a comment also. I, um, I don't know if you realize, I own the building right across the street.
I do know that.
And so, I, I have the same concerns you have. I have tenants in there and, uh, um, have a one residential and two commercial tenants. And, uh, in, in the event that, that it becomes a, a parking lot, as you said, which I hope it doesn't, but I'm afraid it will, then, uh, I'm going to advocate all I can that we make changes.
I appreciate that.
But I think we have to start somewhere, and I think this is probably where it is.
I'm here, yeah, I'm here tonight because I'm going to see people hurt in the interim.
I understand.
Mr. President. Dr. You and I also had a nice, long conversation.
Yes.
And I am compassionate about what, what's going on with your situation. We have talked to the chief immediately after I got off the phone with you that night or that day, talked to the chief, and they said, you know, and, and it wasn't because of me, it was probably all of us, kind of went after and fought for an extra, uh, accessible spot on the street. The way, to me, I look at this is I, I, when I look at this hashtag, I agree with you. I don't, I don't see why we can't just draw another line now, then down on Maple, but there's been four years of work, and really twenty-some years of work trying to figure out the parking problem in Noblesville. And I think, and I can promise you right now, that if this happens that you're afraid of, what might happen with the parking lot. One of my concerns about this whole thing is how are we going to know, uh, when someone keeps a car there for ten days? The license plate reader will tell us that now, and I, I'm assured by what the chief said tonight, that we are going to monitor these, there are a few areas, like President Air pointed out, there are isolated areas, Maple, Ninth Street, um, that, that we're going to be watching probably closer because of the concerns that have been brought up by you and by other people. But to throw away four and a half years of work on, on, on a pilot, that, that, uh, because we have you guys that are concerned about the one street, I think the best approach would be to let the pilot live, but be prepared, I think you've got a lot of support up here, be prepared to change it almost immediately if that's what we have to do. If we find out thirty days into this new pilot that Maple Street is a parking lot, and it is affecting your business, and more importantly, it is affecting your clients, your patients, then there's going to be a quick knee-jerk reaction to that. I, I can assure you.
I appreciate that.
Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I, uh, I'm going to sound a little bit like a parrot head here, repeating a lot of what everyone else has said, but they're great comments. I mean, as they've said, we've had multiple experts over the last four years that have gone through. We've done everything, but I've walked, and I know many of you have walked and counted license plates all the way to video surveillance, done everything we can, and, uh, the experts came up with a few different options. We vetted them with the chamber, with businesses, and, uh, with the public, and we decided this one was the best. Is it perfect? Probably not. And I apologize, Dr. Brad, I know you, and I have emailed, and I really wanted to get with you. Unfortunately, I've been traveling a lot for my main job. I apologize for that, but I have talked to the chief a couple of times about it, and I know, talked to some of the other council members about this. I have certainly compassion for your clientele, and I totally agree with what Mr. Hampton said. If we see there's an issue, we're going to make sure we're surveilled, and if we see there's an issue, in two weeks when we've got our next meeting, we'll be addressing it then. We will, as he said, you have our words, we're going to definitely work with it and do whatever we can, and this is just a pilot to give it a shot and get moving, because there's a lot of us up here that have been wanting to be moving on this for a long time, and we haven't. So, hopefully, we can get going, and I think it may be like many other things where we take two steps back and then four steps forward, but we will continue to address it and take those steps back if needed.
Can I just ask, because I've heard this many times now, uh, that this has been a four-year study, or depending on who you talk to, it's been a twenty-five-year study, it's some long-range, uh, so, that's been looked at. When was the hashtag actually devised? When was that, when was that concept actually introduced?
Probably six months ago. I was, I was in the meeting that it was introduced, but I, and it may have been introduced in a previous meeting, but it's been at least six months.
Okay. My understanding from Bob DeBois this evening is it didn't come up until the summer. So, it's a relatively new idea.
It is a new idea. It's not something we discussed twenty-five years ago, or sixteen years ago. I mean, it, uh, and my own, and, and your, your block is not my only hair of concern. I, I don't, I don't want anybody to think that. I do have a concern of North Tenth Street, past grindstones. Our biggest violators to our parking ordinance are our business owners and their employees. And, and so, if, you know, if they're going to, if they're going to think, well, I can just park in front of this other business, then, then we're going to have to address it.
Okay.
So...
More than anything, I think what chief alluded to, we're going to see data. I think we're really going to be able to look at the data and determine and make a decision based on data.
Okay.
Any other comments? Mr. Johnson?
Um, doctor, I totally sympathize with what your issue is and stuff. I, I do believe, I don't know if there's a perfect solution. I'm pretty sure there's never a perfect solution for parking. Um, I can almost take that to the bank. But I think this particular pilot program has been constructed in such a way and made flexible enough, and we have a council that is very, very sensitive to your needs and, and other peoples within the community. They're going to be watching this like a hawk, um, and at the first sign that something needs to be tweaked or changed, this council's not going to wait six months or a year, they're going to get on it right away. Um, and like Mr. Air, uh, we had offices right around the corner from where you are, so I'm very in touch with, with parking in that area and stuff. But, um, I think, yeah, this council is very, very aware that they're going to make decisions to make this the best that it can be, as close to perfect as that might get. Um, and, and everybody up here is kind of of the same metal on that.
Any other comments or questions? I hate to keep addressing you as Dr. Brad, I just can't get that last name down.
It's, I'll make it really, it's doll, like a baby doll, Lager, like a lager.
Lager, okay. That, that helps the...
Especially the back part, right?
Yeah. But I, I, we, I, I think everybody up here appreciates your concern, I, I definitely do, and, and we will be monitoring it. We have the capability. That car's been out for four or five months now, but they haven't been doing anything with it.
Well, if it's helpful, my wife will help you monitor it like a hawk. We don't have a plate reader, but I got a cell phone, we can take pictures.
And, and I know you ought to reach, you know, to reach me, and I apologize for not getting with you, but it, uh...
Thank you very much for, for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Any other questions or comments for the chief or council comments? With that, do I have a motion? Ms. Wiles.
I would make a motion that we approve a previously discussed ordinance number thirty-nine dash zero-nine dash one-nine. Council consider ordinance, oh...
Second. And moved and seconded to approve ordinance thirty-nine dash zero-nine dash one-nine. Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Nine-zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Council, consider new ordinances for discussion. Council consider ordinance thirty-seven dash zero-eight dash one-nine A, and ordinance amending ordinance thirty-seven zero-eight one-nine dash one-nine for the two thousand nineteen salary ordinance. Ms. Ramon?
Sorry, I'm prepping for my...
Second.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to spend a lot of time discussing twenty-twenty budget, but this is actually a cleanup for the two thousand nineteen budget. As discussed in last week's Finance Committee, before you's request for an adjustment to the per-hour rate for a recruit position under the fire department, uh, this is a budget-neutral request. The two thousand nineteen fire department budget included this pay amount. However, on the two thousand nineteen salary ordinance, it does not reflect the correct pay for the recruit. Uh, so, we are requesting a change from the rate of twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents to the intended rate of twenty-two dollars and twenty-six cents per hour. Um, we are also requesting that the rate be retroactive to January one of two thousand nineteen to pay and adjust the pay for the two thousand nineteen new hires.
Any questions, Ms. Ramon? We have no, oh...
Yes, please. Yes, we, please consider, uh, passing on first reading.
And allow this to be voted on in first reading.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to suspend the rules by three people. Pass on first reading. Had a hand vote. All those, all those in favor of passing on first reading, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number thirty-seven dash zero-eight dash one-nine A. As presented.
It's been moved and seconded to pass, to pass thirty-nine dash, or I'm sorry, thirty-seven dash zero-eight dash one-nine A. All those, or I'm sorry, Ms. Lees, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Nine-zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Council consider ordinance forty dash one-zero dash one-nine, ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty operating budget.
Motion to introduce.
Seconded. Mr. Spalding.
All right, good evening, uh, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, City Controller, and, um, the ordinance before you is the, uh, two thousand twenty introduced budget for, uh, the simple city of Noblesville. Uh, this is part of a annual process required by the, uh, state of Indiana for all municipalities that, uh, we go through, and not only is it a good business practice, but there are certain things that you have to do to report to the state as well, and I'll touch on that a little bit. I prepared a PowerPoint presentation to address kind of some highlights of, of the budget. Uh, I'm not going to go through every slide in the presentation, um, but you do have the whole presentation in front of you. Instead, I will, like I said, hit some relevant points and try and put the screen down. There we go. So, the audience will be able to see the presentation that I'm presenting here, and you guys, all of you have the, uh, the same set of slides in front of you.
Our monitors are not on. Jeff?
Oh, okay.
He's talking about Jeff.
I know, I don't know, I didn't know about that part. There may be something up here that I have to do to make that work.
He's kind of old-school, paper version.
Yep. There you go. Oh, all right, there we go. Didn't have that kind of IT help this morning, or earlier. Um, all right, well, first thing, before I jump into the presentation, I do want to, uh, extend a special thanks to the Finance Committee. They have to, uh, endure a lot more of the in-depth discussion about this type of thing with me, and, you know, I get pretty, uh, uh, excited and into kind of some of the nuanced details, and they spend a lot of, uh, hours kind of working through that stuff with me, and they're, they're an important part of the process, so I do appreciate their role in this. First thing, which all the council members have seen, I'm not going to go through this in detail, but, uh, when I go into the budget process, I do try to have some overarching themes, uh, that, that I work toward, and as we've talked about before, the last couple budgets have been into this theme of right-size and realign, trying to get the budget, you know, shaped up, uh, to where we need to start moving into the era of cost efficiency and performance met- metrics to, uh, to, to just have, uh, more data structured in the right way that we can start, uh, you know, measuring performance, putting together a dashboard of metrics and those types of things. So, that's, that's an important part of what we're doing. And then another thing that we talk a lot about is building this concept of a base steady-state budget and the relevance of that as you try to sort through all the complications and nuances of any budget presentation. If you have a good base budget, you can kind of use that to highlight, you know, where things are changing and where new ideas and new initiatives are, are being requested. I would say the one thing that I have on here that's important to understand is sometimes there's a little confusion that the base budget represents acceptable, and that may or may not be the case, depending on the situation and what the needs of the community are and so on and so forth. It represents what you're doing, but it might not represent what you need to be doing. We won't talk about this very much, but the next item in here is there is a published budget. I talked about the requirements with the state. There's a document that you have to prepare, submit online to the DLGF, and I will say frankly, this document is probably more confusing than it is helpful. Um, the fund codes and names are all different than we use internally. Numbers, uh, on the document don't necessarily match the numbers that we work with because of different assumptions that you have to use when you're presenting things to the state versus the way you're accounting for them internally, but that is the document, it's there, it's official, it's, it's, it's what we're required to report. Now, on to our specific budget. Two thousand twenty budget in perspective, I think these kind of important things to think about as, as we think about the, the budget that you'll be considering. First of, and I think very important, Noblesville is a growing city with a strong tax base. Couple of relevant statistics there on kind of the growth in assessed value in recent years and the growth in local income tax in recent years, both over seven percent rate. Cash reserves for the city have been growing and are very strong. We'll talk about that a little bit more later. The two thousand twenty pub- published budget, AKA the introduced budget, which you have before you, is crafted to accomplish a couple of things. It's preserve our flexibility to operate the way, you know, uh, policymakers, leaders want to, you know, accomplish certain goals, so you got to preserve that flexibility in the way you structure yourself with reporting data to the DLGF, and then to accommodate uncertainty associated with an item that's on our agenda later, but there's a, um, uh, a, an action that we're presu- pursuing with the DLGF, which is a, uh, high AV growth levy appeal. As you see up in the first bullet point, our AV is growing, you know, much faster than most of the state, and there are things that communities in our situation are kind of, uh, encouraged to do, I would say, to, to kind of address that discrepancy between our growth and the statewide average growth, and we'll talk about that more later when we get to that item. And then the last thing here about the two thousand twenty budget is we're continuing to move in a direction of more comprehensive budgeting for, uh, planned capital expenditures, and, uh, that is relevant, uh, because as you integrate capital, um, project spending more completely into your budget, it gives you a more complete picture of, uh, what you're trying to accomplish, but it can have some, um, kind of confusing effects on year-over-year comparisons, uh, you know, where something might look like it's a spending increase where it's just you're reporting it differently. Then, some important numbers. So, the overall total budget that you'll see referenced in, in some of the slides to follow, the total introduced budget, all funds, and this includes debt levy and some pension trust funds that we have, is eighty-point-seven million dollars, but, um, those two groups of funds are very unique in their own right, uh, they're not fungible with anything else that we're doing, they have their own dedicated revenue sources, they, they kind of operate independently, so the next number you see is operational funds only, so it's excluding those, those, that special group of funds, um, and it's, and it's seventy-one million for that introduced budget. However, there are things that, um, you know, you, you prepare a budget one way, uh, and However, there are things that, you know, you prepare a budget one way, and then sometimes there's new information that comes along, or there are other things you have to do to kind of make a better apples-to-apples comparison in terms of what you think your actual spending will be. So, there is a couple expense factors that are relevant in this budget, which, again, I've gone over this with the Finance Committee folks. But one is there's the... a new lit for public safety communications that will impact our required spending in 2020. There is a proposal that's part of this budget that is the establishment of a short-term capital projects fund, which if we are to move things out of the departmental budget request into that fund would affect our spending out of our operational funds. And then this reversions at trend, reversions is just the normal underspending that you have in any budget due to vacancy turnover, things that don't happen. And you're trending that out based on, you know, historical averages. And so, what you get is a 2020 introduced budget. Instead of the $71 million number we have up there, a number just a little south of $65 million on what we would expect to spend in 2020 relative to what was budgeted. And then I put a couple of other comparisons, you know, for, you know, how does that $64.8 million number compare to a couple of other relevant things? There's the base budget for operational funds only and the 2019 revised budget for operational funds only. Those two amounts are fairly close to one another. And so, you can see that if you make those comparisons down below here, it shows that, you know, there's simple mathematical comparisons that show a small, you know, one, little over 1% increase from those amounts. But you actually have to do some normalization to compare, to make the numbers comparable. And when you do that, the increase is between 3% and 4%. So, you know, pretty typical reasonable level of growth in expected spending. Then the other thing that I think is important to put this budget in context is you think about what's going to happen to your cash reserves. And the two main funds that we really try to focus on for maintaining strong cash reserves are the general fund and the rainy day fund. And based on, you know, the budget that is being presented to you with the expense factors that I talked about, that would result in 2020, a change in the general fund cash balance of an increase of about $1 million. And the rainy day fund is expected to go up by about $1.3 million. And that is a result of the practice that we've installed here of late, which is the way the local income tax is distributed. There are these catch-up distributions that happen kind of after the fact. And I've made it a practice of putting those distributions into the rainy day fund to help build that reserve. So, we're expecting both of those core cash balances to go up. Then there's a projection of what they will be at year-end 2020, combined nearly $35 million. And then trying to take a look at what's the adequacy of that core cash relative to, you know, our overall size of our operations, our key revenue streams. And what you can see is that that core cash balance at the end of 2020 will equal about 95% of our projected 2020 total property tax levy. And that's a pretty strong cash position. That would mean that you could basically go almost a year without collecting any property taxes and be able to fund your operations out of reserve. So, that's an extremely strong cash position. Then I've got a series of charts to follow, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm at least going to talk about this one. Takes that total budget number that we talked about before. And the importance of this and the importance of understanding this is that not all of the money that municipal governments operate with is fungible. There's lots of restrictions and structures and limitations established under state law. And so, when you think about all the various funds that we operate, if you try to simplify it to the greatest degree possible, there are these larger groups of funds. I talked about those debt service levy funds, the pension obligations. So, those are the two pieces of pie you see there. The general operating is the money that you tend to think about most of the time that is pretty flexible, pretty fungible. You can put toward any governmental purpose. But it's the restricted capital and restricted operating funds that are a little... make the challenge of managing the finances of municipal government a little bit more challenging because they have certain limitations on them. And examples of those, and it's listed later in the presentation, but the MVH fund, the local road and street fund, the cumulative capital development fund, the FIRE cumulative capital fund, all of those funds fit into one of those two categories. And so, you have to figure out how to most effectively use your restricted funds so that you take the pressure off of your general operating funds. So, with that, like I said, I'm not going to go through the... all of the various... you can... this... well, I guess it doesn't go up on the screen. I'm going to go actually to slide 24. And like I said, there's a whole slew of different charts that basically slice and dice the budget in many different ways and answer lots of questions if people have questions about them. There are a few other notable items I just want to mention that are kind of, you know, major factors and things that, you know, as policymakers, you want to... do want to keep your eye on. So, there's a general pay adjustment in the budget. You know, we've talked about this, you know, 3 plus 1% general pay adjustment. And in total, that is about a $1.1 million increase. And again, you do have to, you know, keep an eye on payroll costs. Those are kind of permanent operating costs going forward. But we're a growing community with growing needs. And then the next category that I think we need to keep an eye on is there are some debt and lease payments that are paid from operational funds. And those operational funds include some general... some things that fall into general operating, most of it coming from some of the restricted capital funds. But the reason why these are important relative to other types of debt, in the private sector, you tend to think about issuing debt as eating into your ability to accomplish other things because the more you've committed to debt service, the more... the less that you have available to do other operating, to address other operational needs. That is how this kind of debt works in municipal government, is that this debt is paid for from funds that if you didn't have the debt, you would have that revenue to be able to reallocate to other purposes. And so, you need to keep an eye on how that number is moving over time. And that's what I'm doing. Then the other debt that people talk about a lot is property tax levy debt service. And this number is actually, you know, it's referenced in the note here. This number in the proposed budget is seeing a relatively big increase if we do this short-term capital projects approach that we've talked about before. But what's interesting about property tax levy debt is the funds that you use to pay that debt cannot be reallocated to other uses. So, when you have this kind of debt, you have a specific levy for that debt. And if that, you know, if that debt were to go away, that revenue stream, you know, ends. And so, it's not the type of thing that you can reallocate to other things. What's important about tracking this is that as you're trying to manage the city's overall property tax burden, you think about that and trying to manage the property tax rate. And then finally, just as a matter of prudent fiscal management, we've talked about this before. We've talked about this in previous budgets. But there is some amount of funding included in this budget that represents contingency funding that is appropriate for, I've put on here for two reasons, to provide flexibility as new opportunities and unexpected costs present themselves because, you know, you can't be all-knowing every time you're putting together a budget. You can't see perfectly into the future. And I think another important part of doing it this way is that it supports more precise departmental budgeting because basically what I've done with all the departments over the last couple of years is I've said, I want your budgets to be as realistic as possible based on what you know. And if there's uncertainties out there, don't bake those into your individual departmental numbers. I'll handle that through, you know, this kind of contingency funding with the hope that if we manage that all well, we wouldn't have to spend any of this. And that would lead to some of the reversion numbers that I talked about before and help, you know, keep the city's cash balances strong. And with that, that is the... those are the topics I was planning to cover. I certainly can answer other questions. I do want to also extend a thank you to Sam Barris, who all of you know by now. He's our new budget and finance analyst. And, excuse me. He certainly was a lot of help in preparing these slides this time as opposed to me just doing it by myself.
Any questions, Mr. Spalding? Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. Spalding, would it be fair to say in the non-personal services contingency that as we move forward with Open Gov and using these new tools and budgeting, that these contingency amounts will probably get smaller the better we get at dialing in on what the budgets for the individual departments need to be?
Right. I think that is fair, although what I've already tried to do is I've been trying to over the last few years, last couple of years, get them down to a reasonable level because actually when you think about it out of an overall $70 or $80 million budget, $2 million contingency is already pretty small from a percentage standpoint. So... but I think that's a fair assessment.
Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Spalding? We have none. You all have your homework to go over this for the next two weeks. If you have any questions, comments, I would prefer you address those directly to Mr. Spalding and the mayor over the... before the next two weeks. We need to get a budget established two weeks from now. So, to wait till the last day is not going to be... not going to work. So, you have a lot of information there. Look at it, and let's do the best we can do, pass a good fiscal budget. Moving on, counsel to consider ordinance 41...
Public hearing.
Pardon me?
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
With that, I'll open the public hearing for ordinance 40-10-19. Mr. Jensen.
Seeing no one come forward, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 40-10-19.
Seconded.
The movement is seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Counsel will consider ordinance 41-10-19 a salary ordinance for appointed officials and employees of the city of Noblesville for 2020.
Motion to introduce.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Ramone?
The ordinance in front of you includes a across-the-board increase and additional position and section changes are indicated with an X. The attached letter does also outline these changes per department. These changes include new position requests, title changes, job title changes, a few positions. We did evaluations regarding the FLSA exempt status, and there are some additional pay adjustment requests as well. On page four of the ordinance, we have a few section changes. Those include benefit changes for newly-appointed Board of Works members for 2020. Clarity was added for the engineering employees who receive their PE. A request to increase the technical pay for the fire department personnel, that's part of our meet-and-confer agreement that will be coming before you yet this year. And in addition, the last section under that on page four is regarding the wastewater utility department, that they shall reimburse the civil city 100% for those positions that were moved from the utility department to the engineering department. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Ramone?
The Xs are telling us not necessarily that it's a new position, but it's a slight change or a new position, right?
That's correct.
How many... do you know off the top of your head how many new positions there will be?
Right there.
It's actually your package, 12.
Was it 12?
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
And you go with that flag.
That's fine. Okay, I didn't see it. That's good. Thank you.
In my attached letter, I also try to outline each one to say it's a new position for each department.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Mr. Taylor?
I should have probably asked you this a long time before tonight, but when you said meet-and-confer is not complete, last year we had an issue after the budget was passed. Is it going to change anything in this budget?
I feel the meet-and-confer agreements are complete. There's no further discussion. We are waiting to hopefully have the budget passed, and then we'll be presenting the meet-and-confer agreements. I'm...
Answer, I think.
Answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I like the long story. You short story.
Yes.
Any other questions? With that, we'll have the second reading on October 29. Counsel will consider ordinance 42-10-19 a salary ordinance for elected officials for the city of Noblesville for 2020.
Motion to introduce.
Seconded.
Movement is seconded. Introduce, Ms. Lees.
Good evening. This is the annual ordinance for salaries for all elected officials. There are no changes other than the general salary increase that's been given to employees.
Questions, Ms. Lees? That will move on. Thank you. Counsel will consider ordinance 44-10-19 and ordinance...
43?
I'm sorry. That was a long one. I didn't want to read it. Counsel will consider ordinance 43-10-19, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the city for the purpose of providing funds to be applied on the cost of the current refunding of its outstanding debt, county option tax, income tax, revenue bonds of 2009, and other matters connected therewith, together with incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of issuing some bonds therefore. This had to be written by you, didn't it, Mr. Spalding?
No, it was not. It was not.
Motion to introduce.
Turn got paid by the word.
Yeah, by bond counsel.
Did they get paid by the word?
The word.
See why I skipped over that?
They get paid by the complication... the scrabble value of the word. All right, yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding. And what you've got before you to help frame this up, too, the next four items are all mine, and they're four items to do two things, which is typical government process there, I guess. And so, the first of these is the bond authorization for a refunding, a refinancing bond. And it's... kind of put in simple context, it's pretty straightforward, kind of no-brainer thing. It's akin to your mortgage company calls you up and says interest rates have gone down significantly. You really ought to refinance your mortgage. That's kind of what's happened here. There's this existing bond issue that interest rates have moved substantially even since it was issued in 2009, I believe, when interest rates were already low, and they've since moved. And there's about 2.7 million left on this bond. I don't remember the exact numbers. But as a consequence of doing this over the next nine or 10 years, the city will realize a nominal cash flow savings of about half a million dollars in lower debt service payments. And the bond that was... or the projects this was supporting, I went and checked, were some sewer and stormwater improvements along Maple Street that were done years ago, as well as some improvements at Dillon Park and Forest Park. So, all those things together are the original bond issue, and all this is doing is just refinancing that original bond issue. The last thing I will say about this, the original intent was to have this item come to you at the September 24 council meeting, but this long complicated language from bond counsel that we just read wasn't ready yet. And so, as a consequence, based on the timing that is in place to take this refunding issue to market, I am requesting that we have this one item adopted at a single meeting if possible. And I think it's pretty straightforward, not too complex. So, with that, that's the item, and that's the request.
I mean, while we're reading, then you did the presentation. With that, it's been requested to waive the rules and pass on reading. Do I have more?
Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Mr. Boyce.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I would make a-
We already done once tonight and did a great job, so keep it up.
Can we suspend the rules and approve this on first reading?
Been moved and seconded to waive the rules and pass on first reading. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, 9-0.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jensen.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 43-10-19.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Ms. Lee's, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
9-0, the ordinance is adopted.
Council consider ordinance 44-10-19, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the local income tax refunding revenue bond of 2019. Mr. Spalding.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, City Controller. And again, this item is part B of the last item. And again, and due to the state-established process, the proceeds from that refunding bond that we just discussed need to be officially appropriated by the council to be spent on paying off the old debt. So that's what this ordinance does. And oh, by the way, it does not need to pass in one meeting. And in fact, because it's an appropriating ordinance, it needs to go through the two-step process and have a public hearing for it. So this is just the introduction of this ordinance. So no action required other than it's being introduced tonight.
Any questions, Mr. Spalding? Stay up here, you're still on there. Counselor consider ordinance 45-10-19, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the city for the purpose of providing funds to be used for the cost of funding certain capital projects, together with all necessary appurtenances, related improvements and equipment in connection therewith.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, again, Jeff Spalding, City Controller. And this is part A of another two-parter for a bond issuance. And this one is different than the last. As we reference in the budget, this bond authorization ordinance is associated with that concept that we talked about in the budget in terms of creating a capital project short-term debt fund for the city. And the tool here is kind of an interesting one. We've talked about it extensively at some of the meetings with you and the Finance Committee meeting. But it creates a vehicle by which the council and the city can really directly manage their property tax rate in a very specific way while addressing ongoing capital project needs. So the purpose of this ordinance is to authorize us to proceed with issuing that type of debt for us to do this for 2020. The debt needs to be issued before December 31. And the other interesting thing about this that I think is worth knowing and understanding is because of the issue that's coming up last on your agenda that I referenced previously, this excess levy appeal and some uncertainty associated with that, we've set this thing up so that we can dial in the exact size of the bond issue once we have the answer on the excess levy appeal. If the excess levy appeal goes through, the amount referenced here, 3.3 million, will be dialed back to about 2.7 million. So we're not going to issue any more debt than is needed to accomplish the goal. But just wanted you to be aware that the amount you're authorizing is established to handle that added bit of uncertainty. And then the last thing I'll say about this, if you have any specific questions about the issuance of this debt or the previous one, Jim Tree, our financial advisor from OW Crone is here. I didn't realize Jim had gotten here before. But if there are any specific questions about the issuance and the process for issuing either of these debts, he can answer some of those detailed questions. And again, this one does not need to go through faster than normal pace, so this is just an introduction item tonight. No action required.
Any questions, Mr. Spalding? Moving on, council consider ordinance 46-10-19, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the capital projects, short-term general obligation bonds of 2019.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
The movement is seconded, Mr. Spalding.
Again, similar to the last item, this is part two of the action for the second bond issue. It's the appropriating ordinance for the bond proceeds and basically establishes it in such a way that, you know, once, if we proceed with this plan, once those proceeds are available, we can apply them to the various capital projects that we choose to over the next year. And again, just being introduced this evening.
Any questions, Mr. Spalding? Moving on to miscellaneous, council consider resolution RC-14-19, a resolution regarding the 2020 high assessed value levy growth appeal. Mr. Spalding.
All right, yes, Mr. President, members of the council, again, Jeff Spalding, City Controller. And I guess this has been the item that was kind of held at the end for the final reveal here that helps fill in the blanks of some of the earlier presentations. But what this is, is under state law, communities like ours where the assessed value is growing extremely fast have the opportunity to appeal to the State Department of Local Government Finance to have their levy amount, their maximum levy amount revised to reflect that growth. And the reason this exists is because in these kinds of circumstances, the community's levy can be revised without adversely affecting the property tax rate and without adversely affecting taxpayers. And the way this works is for a community even qualified for this, their AV has to be growing at a rate that's at least two percentage points higher than the statewide average AV growth or levy growth quotient that is established by the DLGF that sets levy growth limits across the state and doesn't recognize the variance between different communities. And as a result of that, it's something that you've heard about before, that is a significant constraint limitation on fast-growing communities with growing local demands. So that's the reason the appeal exists. I talk about that in the whereas clauses in the resolution. There's a specific section of the Indiana Code that establishes the authority to pursue this type of appeal. Then the additional whereas clauses talk about kind of the rationale why the council would want to do this and, you know, cite some statistics around, you know, other statistics around our growth, as well as the fact that we have established, you know, capital improvements plan that was announced, you know, over a year ago that we entitled Noblesville now. So with all of those factors, this is the council basically directing me to pursue this levy growth appeal with the DLGF. And that has to be submitted to the DLGF no later than October 21. And with that request, I have to have a resolution from the council so that the DLGF knows that the council wants to do this, not just me. So that's what you have before you.
Any questions, Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would make a motion that we approve miscellaneous, number one, RC-14-19.
Second.
And moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving RC-14-19, raise your hand. Motion carries, 9-0. I would like to comment regarding all the effort and work that's been put into this budget by Mr. Spalding's office, the mayor and his administration and department heads, along with his council. We've had several meetings, several opportunities to go over the budget. And this one-hour timeframe that we just spent amounts to a very small amount of time that's been spent. So I would like to thank everyone that's been involved in it. If you do have a question, make sure you get, or comment, make sure you get that back to Mr. Spalding and the mayor in the next couple of days so they can react to that. Any other council comments? With that, do I have a motion?
The move.
Second.
The movement is moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourned, raise your hand. Motion carries. More adjourned.